Stay tuned for a meeting of the Calabasas City Council. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasas.com/CTVlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the council from meeting or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the Calabasas City Council.
Good evening and welcome to the April 27th, 2022, City Calabasas Regular Council Meeting. This evening, I am joined by Mayor Protem Shapiro, Councilmember Weintraub, Councilmember Bazagian, and Councilmember Kraut. The pledge of allegiance this evening will be by Robert Yalder. He is the city's Public Works Director and City Engineer. Robert, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's honor. Please rise, face the flag that we have, and cite a pledge after me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert.
My pleasure.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazagian.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Maurer.
Yes.
Terry Sizer.
All right, we met in closed session this evening. Is there anything the city attorney would like to report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. City council met in closed session, considered two of the three items. Item number two, Conference Labor Negotiator Regarding All Unrepresented Employees. And item three, Conference with Real Property Negotiator Regarding 27040 Malibu Hills Road, Calabasas. No reportable action was taken on either item. The council will be considering item one, the Public Employee Performance Evaluation for the City Manager in a further closed session after the end of the open session meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple presentations this evening. We're going to start with the Sheriff's Crime Report for March 2022. And joining us is Deputy Mason De Mateo. Welcome.
We're having difficulties, Madam Mayor. Please.
Okay, well, wait a minute.
There he is.
Hello. Good evening.
We can hear you, and now we can see you. Welcome.
Perfect. Thank you for having me. I am Deputy De Mateo. I will be presenting the crime report for March 22. So let's get right into it. We did have one allegation of rape on the crime report. This was an incident that actually took place in July of 2021. However, it was reported in March. This incident did involve two 17-year-olds in a consensual dating relationship. There was one armed, it was one strong-arm robbery. This was kind of a wacky incident where an individual living outside of our county stole a Jeep Cherokee from a Calabasas neighborhood and drove that car on the wrong side of the road, ended up hitting two vehicles. Second vehicle he hit, he got out of his vehicle, jumped onto the hood of that car, and then attempted to open the car door. The car door was locked, and the individual did not get out. And then that individual ended up passing out on the side of the road, probably due to drugs and adrenaline. And then was arrested for various charges, driving under the influence of drugs, attempted carjacking, hit, run, et cetera. There was one assault. This occurred at a hotel on Lost Virginous Road between two customers. They got into a verbal argument, and then one of the individuals ended up getting assaulted and going to the hospital for his injuries. Was one residential burglary that was in the Parks Reno area. There was one burglary to a business. There were two burglaries to a garage or an outbuilding. That, one of them occurred on Rencrest, and one of them occurred on Lost Virginous. There were nine vehicle burglaries. Three of those, three of those occurred at a hiking trail. And it all happened in one incident. So three, three vehicles parked at the hiking trail near the fire station on Lost Virginous and Morel Road. It's a popular hiking trail, all three cars. One of them had their door punched. And items were taken in plain view. And then the other two vehicles had their windows smashed and property taken. There were five grand theft incidents. We had three of those incidents were at shopping centers. And this is somebody going around distracting people and taking their wallet while they shop, and then using their credit cards down in the valley for large amounts of cash or large amounts of money. The other two were retail-based, where retail items were taken. We did have three petty thefts and three thefts from unlocked vehicles. There were two stolen cars. One of them was a BMW 328i, and the other one was that Jeep Cherokee that was used in that wacky incident. We did have one arson. That was a vacant house up in the Mont Calabasas area. It was set on fire, and the estimated damage was around $20,000. We did have one swatting call. For those not familiar with swatting, it's basically a prank. And this occurred off the Lost Virginous, the northern part of the Lost Virginous area, where someone called in a domestic violence call. And in that call, they stated that they were being held at gunpoint by their partner. And then at one point, they were pistol-whipped. I was actually there for this call. I actually made entry into the house. It was a very stressful situation. And when we got in there, nobody was home. So somebody called in a prank, something very serious and potentially dangerous. And when we made entry, we knocked the door down, and no one was home. We end up, way end up finding a large marijuana grow in the garage. And the resident there was held responsible for that growth. That is, that is it for the crime report. Are there any questions, concerns, comments?
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Bazagian.
Yes, I continue, I appreciate that we only have one residential burglary this month, but I continue to be very distressed at the numbers here. Last year at this time, we had five. And last year was a record, last year was a record year. This year, we have 17 in three months, which means that we're on, on par to getting three times what we had in 2020. It's just unacceptably high. So I'm kind of curious. Obviously, I don't want any addresses, but where, is there a concentration of these? Or are we just seeing just a out-of-control situation? Or how's it going? Gated, ungated?
Yeah, the previous two months, there were a total of 16. A majority of those occurred on the Park Streets and the Bird Streets, with a few of them thrown in the Lost Virginous area. So there's a concentration on the east side of town. But yeah, no specific pattern. Some of the houses were left unlocked. Some of the thieves entered in through unlocked sliding glass doors. Some thieves entered through unlocked windows in the rear of the house. But yeah, 17 total for the year, and it is absolutely high.
Because you know, I just, as a concluding comment, I realize there's, you know, oftentimes, there's not a lot we can do. But people have always, we've had a certain percentage of the population just keep their doors unlocked. What I'm seeing here is just a manifest increase, a huge increase in the overall numbers here. I mean, we have, residential burglaries are most serious crime out here in general. And there have been years where we have 17, and that's it. And now we're already there.
Right.
Unacceptably high. I don't know what else to say.
I agree.
Okay, Councilmember Weintraub.
Just wanted to say thank you for everything you're doing. I know you go above and beyond for our community. So first, thank you. And I know that you and others from the station are always willing to go out and speak to our HOA's Neighborhood Watch Groups. So I just want the public to know that. With the, with the increases in crime happening, we have to do everything we can to protect our communities, make them the safest that they can be. And I know that you can help give feedback and things that could help, you know, even if it's just a little bit of safety enhancements, it's definitely worth it. So I just want people in our community to know that there is a resource out there that can help educate them.
Yeah, now that we're getting back into the swing of things, a little bit, things are a little bit normal or becoming more normal. I will be going to some Neighborhood Watch meetings and HOA meetings to address concerns for their specific neighborhoods and communities. I also want to point out that on May 12th, it's a Thursday night at Founder's Hall, I will be joining the operations staff from Lost Hills Sheriff's Station at a HOA Neighborhood Group meeting. So we can cover the concerns of the community. And we'll also address some other ways to get involved with Neighborhood Watch programs and ways to look out for your neighbors and your community.
Thank you so much.
Can you give us the time for that, please?
Yes.
That's the meeting with the Public Safety Committee through our subcommittee.
So it's not open to the public?
It's going to be for the HOA presidents, so I believe it's the HOA representatives.
Okay. It sounded as if you were inviting everyone, but you're not.
Just letting you know that it's going to be, it's going to be taking place.
Okay.
So if you have questions about that meeting, you can contact your representative.
And invitations were sent out to the representatives.
Great. Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments more pointed because I agree with both of my colleagues' statements and comments just made. Asking you, Deputy, can people contact? I realize I may not get immediate response. The station at 818-878-1808, if they would like to receive some type of assistance or information or advice on how to make their properties safer as well. I just want to make sure that's something you were indicating.
Yeah, always. So if you call the station and ask for advice, such as property management and safety, they will transfer that call to my line. If I'm in the office, I'll take the call. If I'm not, I will call you back as soon as possible. And I will arrange to meet at your residence to go over those things.
Great, thank you very much. That's, and we haven't had a swatting incident, I don't think, since the days of Bieber in our community and other celebrities. I hope, is there any way, I know it's very difficult to find the individual who, individual or individuals who called in that swatting incident that later led to someone else being taken into custody. I would like to see that person or persons.
We do, we write a report for misuse of 911, and then that goes to the Detective Bureau to investigate. But a lot of the times, these people call from burner numbers that aren't traceable. So it's definitely up to Detective Bureau to track them down, and hopefully they can.
Thank you, and thanks for all your work and everyone in the station. We appreciate it. Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right, and then I also wanted to thank you for your service and remind people to keep their car doors and front doors, back doors, windows locked at all times to avoid some of these preventable crimes. And with that, thank you very much. Stay safe, and thanks for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
All right, our next presenter this evening is Rusey Mulberry. And he's going to talk to us about the Mobile Emergency Operations Center. Welcome.
Mayor, if I can, while Rusey's being brought into the meeting, just a little bit of a background and introduction. This information was presented to our Public Safety Task Force a couple months ago. And at their request, as we did last week with, or last meeting with the Zone Haven, we were bringing this to the entire council for your information. Rusey Mulberry with Karen Nida has been a consultant with the city for a number of years. He has specialties in the communications, filled with helping us with our AM radio, our handheld radios, ham radios, antennas, and so forth. And as we've worked with Rusey most recently, as the council is aware, the city was awarded just approximately $400,000 from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to do several projects, one of which is a Mobile Emergency Operations Center. Karen Nida would be the company that is putting that trailer together. And so tonight, Rusey will show some pictures of what that trailer will look like to, and the equipment that will be in that trailer. Again, we're excited about this project. This will give us the opportunity to have this asset for our use that could be moved to different locations. And a great opportunity to not only use it in the event of emergencies, but for training, which is very important to the city as well. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Rusey, and thank you for being here, Rusey. Hope you're still on mute, Rusey. Rusey, you're on mute?
You're muted.
There you go. Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that technical difficulty. Appreciate the time. I'm going to share my screen to a quick PowerPoint presentation. I'll make it as painless as possible. Can everybody see my share?
Yes.
Great, so we're proposing a Mobile Emergency Operations Trailer. That's approximately what it's going to look like. As most of you are aware, the Southern California is subject to natural man-made disaster. Disaster include, but aren't limited to earthquakes, wildfires, landslides, and possible terrorism. When a disaster occurs, the Calabasas Emergency Operations Center may need to activate and mobilize to support the incident. The definition of an incident is the occurrence caused by either natural or human phenomenon that requires response actions to prevent or minimize loss of life damage to property. And the response to that incident consists of a number of elements. For example, communication, which is very important at any time, warning, evacuation, search and rescue, providing immediate assistance, assessing the damage, continuing assistance, and the immediate restoration of services. And the aim is to provide immediate assistance to maintain life, improve health, and support the morality affected population. And this can really be accomplished by proper planning, training, equipment, and a fully functional and deployable Emergency Operations Center. Currently, the city of Calabasas has an EOC. It's located at the city hall. The current equipment are voice-over IP phones, portable satellite phones. These are portable, so they have to operate outside computers. They do have a ham radio station and a Seaworth radio, which is a county-wide integrated radio system. So the challenges the city may face during and after a disaster, these can range from a possibility EOC may be damaged by the earthquake. Additionally, an EOC may quickly become crowded, and additional EOC space would be necessary. The CEO has determined the best way to augment the regular EOC would be with a mobile EOC trailer. Many cities and areas have mobile EOC units to support field operations. The city has planned on commissioning and building an Emergency Operations Center. This Mobile Emergency Operations Trailer will allow the city to operate in the field with necessary support for the community, and the Emergency Operations Center is activated. You'll, EOC will be small, I'm sorry, the mobile EOC will be small enough to be moved or towed by standard full-size pickup or SUV. These are a couple of pictures of other EOCs. Yours is going to look similar depending on what we decide as a final configuration. Some of the equipment that we're proposing are radios installed to communicate with the current radio repeater system the city has, ham radios to communicate with the city SERP team, as well as other ham radio operators within the city and county, including hospitals, CHP, and other law enforcement agencies that do use ham radio. As we mentioned, the Seaworth radio system, all carrier LT broadband is basically internet for the trailer and surrounding areas. Integrating the trailer with the current voice-over IP phone system the city has, satellite phones, as we talked about before, laptops with EOC and learning software for the AM radio station, TV sets with terrestrial antennas for local news feeds, large monitors and video conferencing for monitoring the emergency operations, desktop workspace, whiteboards, generator, solar battery backup system. The trailer is going to be fully self-contained and fully independent of any city or shore power or utility power. Once the trailer is built, we plan to have multiple exercises every year and deploy the trailers determined by the city. We will have classes on trailering to make sure that people that are, that are assigned to the trailer understand the proper trailering techniques. We'll also provide the necessary training for deployment and demobilization of the trailer, how to go ahead and set it up, and as well as the use and operation of all the equipment inside, the communications, the televisions, the video conferencing, the software that may be installed in the trailer, and also provide any onsite technical support as needed. Maintenance, we plan to train city maintenance personnel on maintaining trailers and the installed equipment. And since this is a trailer, not a motorized or self-propelled unit, the ongoing maintenance cost is minimal. There's no engines or anything to worry about. The maintenance that may be included are the generator oil changes, battery replacements are necessary. The tires on the trailer should last at least five years, and testing of the system and cleaning of solar panels is needed. It's a very basic setup, very low maintenance, and easy to tow and store. And I kept it short. I didn't want to bore you guys too much, but I'm open to any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, and that is never boring. This is important information. And I want to thank you. You actually installed an antenna and helped me with my new radio so that I could listen during disasters. So thank you for that.
I remember.
I'll start off with a question. Can you go back to the solar power? Just describe what the, what it is able to do and what it is not able to do.
Absolutely. We plan to put about 600 watts or so of solar panel on the roof, and that will maintain the batteries inside the trailer. So it will allow you to operate everything except the air conditioning. The trailer is just not big enough to have enough solar on the roof to operate air conditioning systems. But should the generator fail, the batteries will be maintained indefinitely by the solar panels.
And for how long?
Indefinitely.
Okay.
Well, let me clarify that. If we have a lot of smoke and we don't have a lot of sun, that might be affected. But it, since we're putting more batteries than you'll be utilizing, and all the lighting and stuff will be LEDs, the load on the battery is very minimal. So even at night, the batteries will operate throughout the night, and they'll be maintained during the daytime.
Okay. Madam Clark, are there any members of the public that have any questions or wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any hands up yet.
Okay, and I'll turn to my colleagues, Councilmember Kraut.
Rusey, I hate to even comment because it sounds like you have this whole thing all figured out. I'm really impressed with the presentation you gave us, and we're really excited to see this trailer in operation. Just one quick thought comes to mind, two actually, but the solar panels have already been discussed. I assume our generator will be on a separate circuit to serve that air conditioner, and we would be able to plug into power if we were in a location that had it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. You'll definitely be able to include shore power or utility power, as we call it, as well as the generator or the batteries. And the system, the system will have automatic failover, so it'll pick the most powerful source. And if one of them drops out, it'll automatically switch over with no disruption services.
Excellent. And then just one last comment. As you mentioned terrestrial antennas, and I know that on the San Fernando Valley side of Calabasas, terrestrial antennas are functional, but on the Conejo side of Calabasas, not so much. Do you have a plan for receiving signals over there? Or is that strictly going to be through the internet?
That, we can definitely stream live through the internet, so it's not a problem if the council and the city manager and the city coordinators decide to add satellite. We can definitely add satellite television as well. But you can definitely stream because you will have full internet capabilities.
All right, great planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Thank you for the presentation. This is going to be such a great addition and really needed in our community. Just wanted to give a shout out to our city manager. David and I had a public safety meeting, and this was just one of the many items that I know Kindon and our staff have been working on to, you know, they're really trying to respond to some of the inadequacies that we experienced from past emergencies. So I just think we're really on the right track to improve on the subject matter. And there's a lot in the pipeline, and this will just be great. So thanks to Kindon and our staff for all the work on this.
Right, and Mayor Protem Shapiro.
And I'll add my thanks also. Rusey, it looks great. It sounds great. We spent a lot of time going over and coming up with additions. We could all add some things. Working with AM station and our ham radio operators throughout the city, being a source of information, being mobile to a certain extent is really important in case of an emergency, whether you end up being at the community center or at a school site, wherever the end location is, is important. I know we also talked about the opportunity potentially to add charging stations to the outside area for, for certain individuals who might need to do an emergency charge of some kind. And you were going to look into that as well. But thank you very much for this presentation and all the work. It's really an important step.
Thank you.
All right, I do have another question. Do you have pre-identified sites where it would be better to have the EOC parked in the event of evacuation? I know it depends where the fire is. That's why I'm hoping that we'll have a number of pre-identified sites.
That's definitely something. We'll have to work with the emergency manager, the emergency coordinators, Kindon, and the entire team. And let's go ahead and identify, what I like to say, emergency management is the Alpha Sites, the Bravo Sites, and our Charlie Sites, you know, A, B, and C, where we're going to deploy immediately, or if we are going to deploy a unified command or fire command if there's a fire emergency. And let's, you know, definitely want to deploy at a unified command situation and activate both EOCs. And one of the benefits of having the video conferencing is you're going to have live feed from the site. So the regular EOC will have situational awareness. But it's definitely something we have to work in the planning side of it on where we're going to deploy and how we're going to deploy it.
Will it have tags of any sort identifying it as a city EOC, allowing it access to these different command centers that would be established?
Yes, ma'am. You will have exemplates since you are a government entity, as well as, you know, we haven't discussed what we're going to put on the outside of it. And that's something I'll have to work with Kindon. It'll probably say the City of Calabasas Emergency Operations Center or Mobile Operations Center or Mobile Command. We'll have to work all of that out, but it will definitely be identified.
Last question, when will it be ready?
Well, once we get the go-ahead, depending on supply chain availability, we're looking at four to six months.
So not this season?
Well, you never know. If it's available, we can, we can get on it very fast. It's right now, unfortunately, as you know, supply chain shortages are delaying any acquisition of stuff. But as soon as we get the, the okay, we're going to go ahead and, and order the trailer and start planning.
Oh, so the stuff hasn't even been ordered? That's right. We have another piece of business to do. Okay, all right, great. Maury, there was a hand up earlier by a member of the public. Are there anyone wishing to speak that is in the public?
Madam Mayor, that person lowered their hand, so I think perhaps her question was answered during the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Rusey. Appreciate everything you've done for the city and the council to make sure we're...
Thank, thank you very much. I'm so excited to work with such a proactive city. You guys are on top of this, and you have good, great leadership. on top of this and and you have good, great leadership. So I'm not saying that because Kindon is listening, but it's it's refreshing working with somebody and a team that's so so on top of it.
That's great to hear. And that's true, too. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, I am excited to announce that the week of May first through the seventh is Professional Municipal Clerks Week. The International Institute of Municipal Clerks is a professional nonprofit organization that promotes continuing education and certification of municipal clerks for the betterment of the clerk's profession and the municipalities they serve. Next week, May first through the seventh, has been designated as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. It is a time where we recognize the role of our clerks in local government and their contributions in serving their communities and educating the public on what they do. Our city clerk, Mari Hernandez, and our assistant to the city clerk, Analu's Mendoza, work very hard every day. Despite COVID nineteen pandemic and all the challenges that came with it, Mari and Analu's continue to provide a great service to our community. We want to thank them by honoring their professionalism and devotion to their work and to the residents of the city of Calabasas. It's a pleasure to recognize Mari and Analu's on this fifty-third Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Thank you so much, both of you. You are behind the scenes, off camera, so much of the time and just responding to residents and documenting on everything that's required by the law and being helping us be as transparent as possible. So I want to thank you both. And if there's anyone else that has anything to add, go ahead, Councilmember Weintraub.
I just wanted to point out that even people that are upset with the city, they might be upset with the council. They're never upset with Mari and her staff. They're always so appreciative of your work and it definitely does not go unnoticed. So thank you to you and everyone in your department.
All right, Councilmember Crowe.
There is nothing worse than a whole bunch of council members piling onto a presentation, trying to get their words in. But I could not miss this opportunity to say thank you and what a fabulous job you're doing. You have both always made me feel welcome and at ease. And and you make my life so much easier. And for that, I really wanted to say thank you and we do sincerely appreciate you.
Great. Mayor Potem Shapiro.
And I add my thanks to you, Mari. So for the last two plus years, it's been unthinkable. And you have made it relatively easy, as easy as it could be for all of us. So especially now during these times and for the past all the time you're here, a big, big thank you. Look forward to seeing you in person.
All right, wonderful. So thank you again, both of you. We really appreciate all your work.
Thank you all for your disrecognition. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're going on to council announcements. I will start with Mayor Potem Shapiro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to take a moment to congratulate our staff, especially Alex Farsati, Mayor's Youth Council, Environmental Commission, all my colleagues who I know were present at the annual Earth Day celebration, which took place right across from the old location, right across from the Starbucks on Agura Road. And it was a big, big, big success, beautiful day and just wonderful to be out there for a great cause. Secondly, and I know my colleagues will speak of it, so I'll just mention an amazing event. Not just locally, but internationally, the Wildlife Crossing and Groundbreaking took place. It was front page news with a big article I provided to the city in Northern California. So not just here, there, everywhere. So congratulations to all who attended and took part in making that a reality. And Councilmember Crowe and I attended with the Chamber, the ribbon cutting yesterday for the Pacific Coastline escrow. And that was very good. We presented a certificate on behalf of the city as well. I just want to take one moment of personal privilege and mention tonight, for those who are aware or not aware, it is Yom Hashoah, which is International Holocaust Remembrance Day for to honor all the lives of those who were perished and all those who survived the Holocaust. It's also a reminder, especially during these times and all times, to stand up against hate or atrocities anywhere we see them. And hopefully we'll all do better going forward. And last but not least, we won't be here, but in our hearts, a big thank you. And to all the moms, we have two, two of my colleagues, the mayor and of course, Councilmember Weintraub, both mothers. That's the hardest, most important job in my mind anywhere and maybe the 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 least thanked. It shouldn't just be once a year. It should be every day. So Happy Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day to my mom. I love her very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, any other announcements from any other council members? If not, I have just a couple.
I have also, when you're done.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, you can go. I just wanted to.
No, I'm getting organized.
Quickly, I know we are all hearing the news from the Metropolitan Water District and about possible restrictions in terms of outdoor watering, possibly starting in June. But just wanted to announce that the Los Virginist Municipal Water District will be holding a virtual town hall meeting on May eleventh at six PM to review the proposed plan with the district's customers and solicit feedback. So it's really important that people listen. I know the city will continue to communicate with residents, but this will have a huge impact on our community. And there's a lot more information that we all need, but really important in that we all tune in and listen to what the Los Virginist Municipal Water District has to say. Because June first, we'll be here before we know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you. I've got a few announcements to make. First of all, the Coffee with the Deputy happened just after our last council meeting. It was fantastic. I want to thank Lieutenant Fender, our acting captain at the Lost Hill Sheriff Station for being there along with all of his deputies. So a lot of members of the public there and it was great just to have that informal exchange with the deputies and talk about crime in the area and how we can help prevent it. We also had a chamber networking lunch and we had a fabulous speaker this month. It was our own Mayor Mary Sue Maurer and also attended, James attended with us as well, Councilmember Bizaji. We have a new business that opened up here in Calabasas. The Chamber of Commerce had a ribbon cutting for a business Kika Stretch. If you can only imagine, it's not a yoga studio. It's not therapeutic massage. It's something halfway in between. It is, and I I loved it so much, I signed up myself afterwards. And I did not use my council members discretionary account, guys. This was fabulous. Got a great stretch out of it. It's a, it's, I can't even describe it. You got to go check it out. I do also want to weigh in on the water issue. I did attend the Metropolitan Water District meeting. Hopefully, we can have a presentation here at the city level so that people can understand this better. But the bottom line is because of gravity, because where we're located in the geography, because of the pipes and the pumps in the area, our area can only get water from the California State Water Project. So those areas of Los Angeles that are fed by the Colorado River, not us, are not under the same kind of crunch that we are. And I want to make sure that the public understands that. Because when we see these water rations, they are very drastic and it's going to take, it's going to take a village. We're going to have to work together on this. We're going to have to learn how to water our trees by hand. We're going to have to cut back to one day a week of watering on June first and we're going to have to adhere to these water budgets. So we got a long road ahead of us and I think we have a lot of work as the city council to inform our residents alongside our water district so that the message gets out there. More to that, more, more to come on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bizaji.
Yes, our Mayor's Youth Council is sponsoring a Young Voters Night for young voters and in particular, but also any first time voters who want to go up and down the ballot and learn about the different offices and how to actually vote and it's in terms of the mechanics, how to cast your vote. So we will be doing that on May nineteenth here at Founder's Hall and it'll also be available on video as well. And Mari, our city clerk is helping us work on that. Thank you.
The time is seven PM.
Seven PM, sorry, Founder's Hall.
Thank you. All right, I have just a couple announcements. I do want to reiterate the seriousness of the water drought and the one day only watering a week. I think it's really time for people to pull up their lawns. I don't know how much more serious this has to get before people will do that. The Southwest has been struggling for decades and decades and have beautiful landscape drought tolerant native planting. And it would give me great pleasure to see this start happening in our own city finally. On Saturday, there's a couple activities on King Gillette Ranch, Santa Monica Fund, who is one of the agencies that funded the Wildlife Crossing, is having a picnic for the park. And it's at four o'clock and there's a fee based and it's a get you a delicious food, a fajita bar picnic, some drinks. There's going to be rangers there, all sorts of activities in a park-like setting. So that's Saturday, this Saturday at four o'clock. And also this Saturday at our senior center is Cup of Joe. This is a trio of an all acoustic performance of classic rock music from the late sixties spanning through the late seventies. You have to register online at calabassasenior.com to get your your reservation. And that is it for me. All right, we're going to move on to oral communication and public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Laura Weisher.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, and thank you for allowing me to to speak with you this evening. I'm Laura Weisher, a Calabasas homeowner and a director for the Calabasas Park Homeowners Association, where I serve on both the Classic and Lake Committees. Calabasas Lake is an environmental gem for waterfowl and migrating birds. As we have all experienced during the spring months and early summer, the geese can become extremely aggressive when nesting and raising their goslings. Additionally, the grass area at the west end of the lake can become overrun with animal droppings that present health and welfare issues. This is particularly evident as people picnic in the area to enjoy the Calabasas Concert Series. I think we've all struggled for a few moments trying to find just the perfect place to put our picnic blankets. The city's efforts to address these issues have been effective in controlling the presence of of the geese and the health and safety concerns. And CPHA supports these continued efforts. On a personal note, I've been involved in a number of the annual bird counts at the lake and want to share a process improvement suggestion. Going forward, have the monitoring focus on the period of February through July when the geese are nesting nesting and the goslings are present. This is the time they are very aggressive. And effort should focus on clearing the walking paths and pedestrian areas. Monitoring the geese population during this limited period would also help ensure that other migrating wildlife can use the lake as a rest stop during their winter journey. The lake is a critical water resource for migratory waterfowl. There are so few water resources left in our area that an enhanced focus on geese oversight could be helpful to other wildlife while potentially using financial resources effectively. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Have a good evening.
It sounds as if you were speaking on one of our consent items for the record. Are there any other speakers for public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Ellie Deco.
Is this for public comment or is it for a consent item?
Her hand is up, her or his hand is up.
I apologize. I will, I'm speaking, I want to speak again in regards to the falconer. So if that's later, I can wait.
Okay, thank you.
We'll bring you back in.
Are there any other people on public comment?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so now we're going to move to consent items. There are items one through eight, seven. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items?
Six, please.
All right. Peter?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number three, please.
Three. All right, items three and six. Items three is the falconry contract and number six is the lifeguard. And is there a motion then to approve one, two, four, five, and seven?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bizaji.
Hi.
Councilmember Crowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Maurer.
Yes. Carrie Spexier. All right, we're going to proceed with item number three. This is a recommendation to approve a two-year professional services agreement with Pacific Coast Falconry to provide trained falconry services to Calabasas Lake in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Councilmember Crowe, go ahead.
Thank you. I was interested in two items here, specifically access to the lake by our residents and the cost of this, is this being taken out of a general fund or being assigned to a landscape maintenance district?
And Kindon will let me answer that.
Mayor, we do have Robert and Heather that have joined in. Robert, can I turn that over to you and Heather for these questions?
Sure. Actually, Heather is the lead on this. The funding is definitely from Calabasas Classic LMD Fund, is not general fund. And the whole idea started back in 2013 when we had a lot of aggressive geese attacking senior children. And we were asked to find what's going on in local lakes from Lake Balboa to West Lake. Heather has done a great job. I'd like to turn it over to her to report back on that. And we take it from there. Heather, can you hear me?
Yes. And Heather, before you start, I just want to confirm we we have one public speaker on this item, correct, Mari? Are there any others?
Just the one, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Heather. Welcome.
So I'm sorry, in regards to the two questions, if you don't mind, Councilmember Crowe. The first question, could you repeat that one, please?
Well, yeah, the the first question was who has access to the lake? And the second question was which fund was the money coming out of? I'm looking for an understanding that the the residents that have access to the lake and the landscape maintenance district that they participate in is the one that's covering the cost for this and making sure that those that are in the landscape maintenance district that's covering the cost also have access to the lake.
So the lake that covered the cost is Zone Seven Classic Calabasas. Classic Calabasas, it's private property and they're the owner of the lake and association park. Therefore, those funds come out of their private account. It does not come out of any other HOA zone. It comes out of Zone Seven. As far as access to the area, any resident at any HOA can contact their homeowners association and they will either direct them to Ross Morgan. They can call Ross Morgan directly or they can call the city and call the landscape division. And what they will need to do is in the MOU that was agreed to back in 2010, they pay a one-time thirty-five dollar fee and they show proof that they own and are residents within the city of Calabasas and they will be issued the pass.
And so that would be any resident of Calabasas or do they have to be a resident of CPHA?
They have, my understanding in the MOU, they have to be a resident within one of the Within one of the gated communities within the L and D District. And I believe Matt might be.
Yeah, let me jump in there if I could, Mayor Council. Thank you, Ms. Melton. The lake access requirement under the two thousand and ten agreement between the city and Calabasas Park Homeowners Association. Provides that any residential property owner within Landscape Maintenance District number twenty-two. Which is C P H A plus, it also includes some larger areas. Any resident who lives within. Landscape Maintenance District number twenty-two. Can get access to the lake and to do so, as as Ms. Melton noted. They should contact either their HOA or Ross Morgan or the city. At Ms. Melton and I'll ask her to provide her her phone number. And it's a one-time thirty-five dollar fee to get an electronic FOB to then access the lake. The requirement is that it be proof of payment of the Landscape Maintenance District number twenty-two assessment. Which would just be a property tax bill. So it's not every city resident, it's only those who pay into. The assessment for Landscape Maintenance District number twenty-two, but anyone in that category, whether they are or not. A member of C P H A has a right to access Calabasas Lake. And the really as noted, the process is to do so is there. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm sorry, one more question because I I might have misheard in the beginning. What was the reference to payment by L and D seven A?
No, no, it's L and D O seven, Zone Zero Seven, which is Classic Calabasas. Which is one of the associations or within the district.
Okay, and they will have the cost?
They hold the cost, it's not distributed by all of the associations within the district. It's one. Of the HOAs that covers the cost because they are the owner of the lake.
That answers all of my questions. Thank you very much.
I don't see any other hands. I have a few questions, but I'd like to go to the member of the public that had a comment or question, Madam Clerk.
Ellie Deco is in and.
Yes. Thank you. This is Ellie Deco. I am also alongside with Laura who spoke earlier. A member of the Calabasas Park Homeowners Association, a director on that board, and I serve on. Sort of events committee and the lake committee. I also am a resident of Calabasas Lake. I live on the lake front, lake shore. And have observed. With great joy and appreciation our. Majestic lake and all of the natural waterfowl that make it home. The the Canadian geese in particular. Have made it home year round. They're typically migratory birds, but they like it so much, they tend to stay. And. We have had, as was noted earlier, some problems in the past with their behavior. They're very familial birds. They take very dear care of their their mates and their offspring. And that's what leads to some of the aggressive behavior. But when you look at it through a different lens, it's really quite beautiful and 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 a joy to behold. That being said, I've also seen the falconer in action. I am on the lake daily, as I said, I also kayak the lake almost every day. And so I've observed and and watched the falconer in action. It is a very natural process. That while the birds are harassed, they're not attacked or injured. And and it seems to be quite effective in both educating these birds that they are not the top of the food chain here. And keeping keeping them in check to some degree. So as a member of the lake, as a Calabasas neighbor and as someone who loves the nature that we have here. And as well as a member of the board. I am a supporter and I know I speak for others of the falconer to continue their services. And and thank you for the opportunity to share these thoughts.
All right, thank you. And then Heather, my question is, I just want to confirm that. At no time do any of the wildfowls, are they killed or their eggs destroyed?
No, they are not killed. That's not the option. The the what it is to be done is to keep them in flight.
Got it. I just want to make sure the public understands that as well. Are there any other council questions? If not, can I have a motion for item number three?
Move adoption of item number three.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Buzajin?
Hi.
Councilmember Kraut?
Hi.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Hi. All right, we're going to move on to item number six, consent. This is approval of a professional services agreement. With Cooksey's Lifeguard and Swim Academy LLC for lifeguard services at the Tennyson Swim Center. In the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Councilmember Buzajin?
Yes, I know there was reference in the staff report to the fact that we would not displace any of our employees. But I don't know how that's to be enforced. What ha, you know? Is there a way to write into there that we will not lay off any of our employees or that? At no time would we favor an outside contractor with an existing employee?
That's a great question. So so our staff are not losing their jobs. They're not being absorbed into the contract. The contractor is filling gaps, so our staff will still work as usual with the contractor filling in those gaps.
So at any time, how would a an excess of employees be handled?
You mean if we if we hired more lifeguards on the city end?
Well, I'm not really sure how, I I'm not, so if we have twenty lifeguards and we need thirty, we go to the contractor and say we need ten?
Right, so that's how that's how it's written at this point with the supplemental. So as if we get to hire more lifeguards as we do more recruitments. Then that'll pull back on the Cooksey agreement. So right now it's filling the spots, filling the gaps where the city staff can't accommodate.
Is there a minimum, a number of of lifeguards we have to hire through Cooksey?
Yes, which will easily meet because of the the shortage of lifeguards for us. So I think since I wrote the staff report, I think we're down to thirteen. So I believe we have to use, let me try and find that.
Was it twenty? I can't remember what the number was. There was a number in there I saw.
Yeah, there's a certain number of hours.
Well. I I just want to be guaranteed and assured that none of our employees. Will, who have been loyal to the city will be laid off.
No, absolutely not.
The other thing, I I would like. Council to give direction to the staff to. Send a written communication to each of these employees of ours and explain what is happening so they have a full understanding. And they do not worry about losing their jobs. If that's agreeable with the rest of the council. Otherwise, I don't have any other concerns about the contract. And then I have one additional question, which was to Kendon. The cutbacks that we've had in the hours of the Tennyson Swim Center, is this going to resolve? Rather, the pool part of the Tennyson Swim Center, is this going to resolve that? And if so, when do we anticipate bringing back the regular hours?
That's an excellent question, Councilmember. And as the council is aware, this is a problem that we've been dealing with, is it, you know, last year. And we're not the only agency to be experiencing this. If you talk to the the Y M C As or other cities. They're seeing the same shortage in lifeguards. And so you're correct, Councilmember, the the whole purpose of this contract is to be able to provide the the programs and the hours. That we've been, we've had to cut back. And so that would just be. Once the contract is signed and we're able to fill in those gaps, as Erica mentioned, we'll be able to offer those hours. And provide that that full range of services that we have in the past.
And when do we anticipate that? Hours changing.
If we move ahead with with the contracts, the the contracted lifeguards will be trained through the the month of May. And beginning June, we would go back to normal hours.
Okay, thank you.
Hey. Any other questions from anybody? All right, is there a motion to approve consent item number six?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Buzajin?
Hi.
Councilmember Kraut?
Hi.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes.
All right, we're on to item number eight under new business. This is a discussion of ordinance number twenty-two-two dash three ninety-eight. Adding section seventeen point eighty-two, the urban lot splits. And seventeen eighty-four, the ministerial design review permits. To Title Seventeen, Land Use and Development of the Calabasas Municipal Code. Percentage Bills Nine and Ten. And our city attorney, Matt Summers, will be making the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll be giving the presentation and then I'll be joined for questions by. Community Development Director Michael Klein and City Planner Tom Bartlett. With that, I will begin the presentation. All right, does the slides come through?
Yes.
Thank you. So S B nine and ten draft ordinance discussion. As a start, tonight we're discussing a draft ordinance. Nothing will be adopted tonight. If desired, the council could give direction for the ordinance to move forward. To the Planning Commission for a discussion and full review at a public hearing. Then to return to the city council at a further public hearing and then could be adopted as desired. So S B nine was a bill passed last year that took effect January first. It had two main components. It's a housing bill that was intended to create. The opportunity for significant additional units to be built across the state. By one, allowing urban lot splits, which is every single family lot can be split into two. With certain rules and regs. And two, allowing up to two units to be built on any single family lot through ministerial designer view. Taking those two in turn, urban lot splits means that each single family residential lot that's otherwise eligible for the requirements. Could be split without planning commission review or approval and without otherwise complying with the subdivision map act into two lots. Ministerial design review means that the. Decision has to be made by staff, not the planning commission nor the city council. To allow one or two units to be built on every single family lot that meet certain standards in any single family zone. And that includes both. Empty lot adding one house, empty lot adding two units, or existing one unit lot, a typical single family house. Adding a second unit. Independent of the rules we already have for accessory dwelling units, this is another way to build up to two units per lot. And it's a part of the state's goal is to increase housing. With the caveat, significant caveat that nothing in this bill requires that those units be affordable. Despite the rhetoric from some in Sacramento. So eligible sites under the state default S B nine are urban lot splits, ministerial designer view. The graphic gives a somewhat stylized interpretation of what the bill is intended to create, which is. In a single family neighborhood, you start with. One lot per, or one unit per lot and you would shift to two units per lot in various configurations, sometimes one building. Other times duplexes. The text on the left is what we're proposing in the draft ordinance. And this is a draft ordinance that staff put together reviewing S B nine, reviewing ordinances adopted by. Our partner cities in the COG and other cities around the state. And taking a look at some letters that have come out from the Attorney General attacking. Several ordinances adopted by other cities and commentary from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Raising questions regarding some ordinances. So the proposed ordinance would. State plainly that S B nine projects would be eligible only. In the city's three single family residential zones, R S, R R, N R C, not commercial or multifamily. And a lot could not have been split before under S B nine, so it's a one split and then you're done. And. Noting that either way, it's ministerial. S B nine, and this is default state law. Is blocked if a project would require any of the following demolition or alteration. Of a unit that is subject to an existing affordability covenant. So if we have a project. That has a single family residence that was subjected to a or benefited from the city's, one of the city's programs. And such as the I D U program that allows property owners to voluntarily restrict their site to moderate income. Affordability, that would be prohibited from taking advantage of S B nine. So to any unit subject to rent or price controls, none exist in the city, but if that were ever to be adopted. That would be a protection. And then perhaps most critically, any unit occupied by a tenant in the last three years is blocked from S B nine. So to any unit removed from the rental market under the Ellis Act for in the last fifteen years. Now I'm going to turn to the draft ordinance to standards for urban lot splits. This is splitting. An existing single family parcel into two parcels, and these are our proposed standards in the ordinance. That narrow what is allowed by default by state law to the extent that the city can narrow it. Intending to create a more development profile that's more more consistent with the city's general plan and its existing standards. Number one, floor area. Urban lot splits would only allow up to eight hundred square feet per unit for the two units. Maximum two units for each of those two new parcels. So the net effect under S B nine is. Four units maximum. Under current law, you can have. Single family residential parcel, if one main unit, an accessory dwelling unit. And then a junior accessory dwelling unit for three units max. S B nine allows up to four. Split two parcels, two units per parcel. We make that plain that it's max four. And then as to lot size, the resulting lots from an S B nine lot split have to at least be twelve hundred square feet. And they have to be such that the the smaller lot can't be small than forty percent of the original lot. The net effect is a minimum lot size to split of twenty-four hundred square feet. On, also on the lot splits. That the project would have to comply with the underlying zones, otherwise development standards, height, lot coverage, pervious surface. Slope, hillside rules, ridgeline rules, similar. Setbacks, the state requires that we cannot require different setbacks than those existing on the ground for existing structures that are modified. Otherwise, it's four foot side and rear setbacks. The front is as set by the underlying zone. Fire safety standard, these two are added on top of state law. These are some of the key provisions that staff proposes in this ordinance. One is a ten-foot separation between any buildings. This isn't a setback, which is distance from property line to the building. This is proposed as a minimum ten-foot gap between buildings, whether on that lot or another lot. Intended to reduce the chance of fire spreading from building to building and then requiring. Sprinklers as well. On the S B nine unit, so this is the ministerial designer review requirement that at least, I'm sorry, up to. Two units must be proved by right. On any single family parcel, number one, limiting that also to eight hundred square feet in in area per unit. Max two units per parcel zoning and the lot, I apologize, lot size governed by the underlying zoning. The key here is that the state limitation is that the city must allow at least eight hundred square feet. We would be imposing a limit on the other side of that to a maximum of eight hundred square feet, taking advantage of what is left open in the law. And then as to height. It would tie it back to the existing zone rather than setting a separate rule for parking. This is dictated by the state. We can still require. One off-street parking space per unit unless it's one and a half a mile. Of a quote high-quality transit corridor of which none currently exist in the city. Or within one block of a car show, that's a zipcar or similar shared car location. And that as to HOAs, and this is mandatory HOAs. Not voluntary associations. This is an association in which membership is an incident of property ownership. And if you own a house, you're required to join and you're bound by the C C N Rs, the covenants, conditions and restrictions. Any mandatory HOA has the power to exempt itself from S B nine. And thus exempt itself from lot splits and being forced to to approve up to two units by right. However, HOAs will need to assess whether their existing covenants, conditions and restrictions implement that prohibition clearly and plainly or not. The city has sent notices back in the fall to all HOAs. In the city, providing them. Information regarding that power that they can use and then some some. Resources for those HOAs that wish to take advantage of that power. And I will note here, the original accessory dwelling unit legislation back in twenty fifteen was similar. That was later amended, so this may be a somewhat limited window, but nonetheless, it is an option available for mandatory HOAs. And this is something that the HOAs would have to do on their own. It cannot be done for them by the city, but as noted, we give them information. Last, S B ten. S B ten allows but does not require. City upzone, transit-rich or urban infill areas defined as areas that are relatively wealthy or relatively job-rich compared to the default. To allow up to ten units. To allow up to ten units per parcel and skip sequel and any other process. SB ten itself protects open space, including areas such as measures that protected by measures D and O. The proposed ordinance. Includes an express declaration. That the city is declining to use that power and thus is, is not exercising the power granted to it by SB ten. The. There is a lawsuit pending that would, that has challenged SB nine. It is filed by a number of charter cities, Redondo Beach, Torrance, Carson and Whittier. It was filed recently, so it has not yet been, no ruling yet. Calabasas, of course, is not a charter city, so it would not directly benefit us. However. There's some hope that it may cause the legislature to revisit the question. And we will continue to monitor the lawsuit and others that are pending. There was a state ballot measure. That was pending for, was being circulated for signatures. Those proponents have pulled that measure back. And but are believed to be revisiting the question for the twenty twenty-four or another ballot in the future. So that opportunity also continues to exist. Next steps. I've given a quick overview. I'm available for questions as are Mr. Klein and Mr. Bartlett. And the ordinances in the staff report. And tonight, the ask is if there's direction to staff to move forward with a draft ordinance and a full discussion. At public hearings at the planning commission and then, of course, to return to the city council or not. And with that, I am available for any questions. Thank you.
I'm gonna start with members of the public. Are there any members wishing to speak, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, I do not see any hands up.
All right, and so I will go to my colleagues. I will start with. Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and hold off from my questions. Thanks or comments.
Okay. And now I see Jane, Councilmember Bissagin.
Yes, I have some questions on the staff report. Going in order on page six, Matt. There are two references to the proposed ordinance would allow decisions of, of the director to be appealed to the planning commission. You see those two paragraphs there. From there, what would it take for a council appeal?
So any decision of the commission. That was on appeal of the director could then be appealed to the city council. By existing code.
Okay, so what I prefer is that it say that. The decisions can be appealed to the planning commission and. And from there, the city council, so that people would not be incurring fees for doing that, because I imagine these are going to be largely. Homeowners that are impacted next, next to these parcels. And I don't want them to have to bear the brunt of, of challenging those decisions. That's my, my opinion. That's obviously subject to council majority. Next, on page seven, you answer part of this charter cities. In the first line, you mentioned the charter cities are the ones that are. Or well, all the litigants in this current litigation, all the plaintiffs are charter cities. Is that, looking at their lawsuit, it would, a ruling would only apply to charter cities or could it be used by non-charter cities like ours?
So the arguments that they have asserted in their petition. Our home rule is to charter cities. So the relief they have sought is only charter cities.
But are all of their causes of action related to being charter cities? Are there any other?
Their, their lawsuit is just for charter city power. They did not assert as I, and I will double check, but as I recall, they did not assert. Any non-charter city rights.
Were there not other cities that have dealt with, I mean, you said there are no other cities that have filed anything?
No cities, to my knowledge, have filed into any other lawsuits. I've not checked all four hundred and eighty-eight cities, but. None that, that I heard of through every source I did review.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I expect that we would know about it from the league or something.
Right, the, the press that was. The suit that everyone seems to be putting their eggs in the basket, so to speak, is this lawsuit, which only is for charter cities.
If this lawsuit's successful, does that give any hope to non-charter cities to follow suit?
It may. If, if the suit succeeds. Part of how it will succeed is by finding that. There's not a statewide interest in the. Housing promotion that SB nine does, that creates the basis to then start to argue. That we should return to our default police power, local zoning control. So it gives us some hope, but I, I want to temper that a bit. The, the direct ruling would be beneficial to charter cities.
Have non-charter cities filed any amicus briefs or anything of that sort of been asked to do so?
To my knowledge, none of the yet been filed, but the case is very early. It was just filed. A month ago and.
When can we get a decision on this case, do you think?
Trial date has been set July twelfth, I'm sorry, trial setting conference July twelfth. Decision will be mid next year.
Okay.
If not late next year.
I would just reiterate, I'm very supportive of this ordinance. I don't think the Attorney General's right in his interpretation. He may not even be the Attorney General after this year. So it's, it's very important that we follow through and we put in place. These statutes regardless of the threats that are being made because SB nine. And SB ten, even though the ordinance we put into effect can be repealed by a majority vote of the council, so it's really not much of an ordinance. With regard to SB ten. Um, I, I feel very strongly that we ought to make the statement and do this. It's, it's very important to our residents and this is a. Wholesale intrusion on local control of housing and development. Thank you.
Councilmember Crowe.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of clarification questions as well. You mentioned. The eight hundred square foot maximum. The state law is an eight hundred square foot minimum. Could you clarify that for me?
Happy to. So state law requires that we allow an SB nine unit, whether it's a lot split or. Two units by right to be at least eight hundred square feet. It doesn't limit how big they can be, leaving open the ability as. I, I advise and other cities have adopted to set a maximum, but that, I suppose seems confusing. It wouldn't mean that the unit would have to be eight hundred on the dot. It would mean that a resident could build between zero and eight hundred. But not eight oh one or eight fifty or a thousand or larger. That would be through the regular review process. So we would protect. Up to eight hundred.
Okay, but if somebody wanted to split their lot or build two units on a lot of more than eight hundred, they'd have to go through our normal process.
That's how the ordinance is drafted, yes.
Okay, second question was you mentioned, or on your slide, I saw one hour wall, one hour firewall. Current residential standards require a one hour wall between the garage and the unit. Is this recommending that the entire unit be built with a one hour assembly?
This is recommending that the one hour firewall be between two units if they're in the same structure. But not the interior walls within each unit.
Okay, we should also explore the possibility that they would have to be a one hour wall if they were. In close proximity to each other. Getting back to that ten foot separation. This is something that I'd like to explore a little deeper when we send this to the planning commission. The last one was a mention of the junior ADUs. And limited to four units, one. Lot split and two units per lot. Getting us to the four units. I don't see any reason to try to prohibit the junior ADU. A junior ADU is simply put. A bedroom and a bathroom within an existing building for use by a separate tenant, a room for rent, if you would. A nice room for rent. And I think that would be something that actually helps. And is likely to qualify as part of our affordable housing goal. And I don't see it as a detriment to the property compared to building additional structures and splitting the lot. So I'm not sure I would. Agree with the idea that we should limit it to four units. We should. Perhaps be either clear on it or silent on it, but the junior ADUs, I would strongly. Want to keep in there, I would believe. Those are my thoughts and I'm looking forward to hearing more from my colleagues.
Councilmember One Trump.
Matt, can you just go over again? If we don't move forward this, with this ordinance, what happens and if we do, just quickly?
Sure. So if we do nothing and let state law apply by default, then. Any single family residential owner could apply to split. To, one lot into two, into two lots or to build up to two units. On an existing single family parcel. And they'd have to meet certain triggers. But they would generally be able to do so without going through a process, without sequel and planning commission review. Et cetera. It would be, there'd be in particular, no size limit. If we adopt the ordinance, then. There would be two paths, the less than eight hundred square foot per unit path. That's protected and no process or minimal process over the counter. Or larger through the usual process, which generally requires planning commission review. For new single family residences. And I should note that there's. We'd also continue to monitor the ordinances. The, as to any further action by the AG. The, or I will add one more point. The ordinance as drafted has, does not include. Any of the provisions that were attacked. By the Attorney General in the two cases, the two letters that were sent, and I'll summarize those briefly. Woodside up north in the Bay Area decided that the entire city was mountain lion habitat. And the AG sent a letter and then the next day they repealed that. Perhaps indicating the strength of their argument and more down here. Cities Pasadena has exempted their historic districts and their landmark districts. Which are culturally relevant, but not necessarily historical. The Attorney General has attacked that. Pasadena has pushed back. The lawsuit will be filed soon. We'll monitor that. Because we do not have any landmark districts, I have drafted this ordinance to protect historic districts. Fitting within what is plainly within the law and then we'll let Pasadena have to fight on that second issue. Does that answer the question?
It does. And, but my issue all along with these two or these two bills is. I don't understand how they don't take into consideration being in a high fire zone. And I know it's specific, explicitly states that that is not a consideration. But I just cannot support that. I mean, you hear day in and day out from residents being dropped for, for homeowners insurance. Because of their high fire risk. I mean, it's such an issue in our communities and then to say. We can't insure you because you're in such a high fire zone, but we're going to continue to add all of these homes to your neighborhood. Just, I mean, I wish we were part of the cities challenging this. I mean, I just think there's so many issues with these and this one size fits all approach for all communities is just not good policy. So, I mean. Obviously, I would support the ordinance because it gives us a little bit more control, but I really want to stay on top of. Monitoring these cases and I just, I mean, have any of these cases brought up the high fire risks?
None that have been filed yet. The, there's discussions. Within Cal cities and other groups about taking a look at that approach. None have yet come to fruition. It's something we're monitoring and will continue to monitor. The options there as they may come forward.
But I wish we were like, not just monitoring it, but we were out front on this. I mean, we've denied projects. Because we're, we're saying these are high fire areas and evacuation routes and this and that. And we've felt that that was legally just. And now we're saying that. You know, in the same areas, people can continue to out add. Housing on these single family lots. Like to me, these bills, there, it's also a safety issue in our community.
Okay.
We can bring forward a. Further analysis of the options to, to. Take that aggressive, that, that stance, perhaps in a close session discussion to follow.
Okay.
All right, Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
Thank you and thank you for that. I appreciate all the work and the ordinance or draft ordinance you provided. Matt, could you go ahead and reiterate your suggestion? As to the maximum size you indicated you.
Yeah, so the, my recommendation would be to set that the maximum size. For units is eight hundred square feet. Under either the lot split or the ministerial designer view approach.
Okay, and the reason for that is?
Because the state says that we have to allow at least inner square feet. And doesn't say what about larger. So if eight hundred square feet is protected, then we could agree to protect that.
Okay, and do you anticipate that that would? Allow us to receive a nice letter from the AG's office as well as to the maximum. Size.
I don't get the set, I have no crystal ball, but I don't get the sense that that provision itself is at high risk. The reason being, number one, most cities that have adopted, if not all, an estimate ordinance have done so, so there's significant safety in numbers. And two, if this legislature had meant to protect larger units, they would have so stated. However, of course. We are not just in conversation with the Attorney General. The legislature is also listening. So it's possible that that provision will be adjusted in next year's bill.
Okay, and is there a reason it's not in the draft ordinance before us? Can I ask that?
The, oh, the, the inner square foot piece is in the draft ordinance.
Oh, of a maximum limit. I thought you said it wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it is there. That's how we.
Okay, I read, that's how I read it, so.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, we, we did draft it in there.
Okay, very good. Oh, thanks for that. And again, it's, it's good. I would, any, this is all about having some semblance of local control. When it comes to these things. There is an assembly bill. Working its way hopefully through pertaining to evacuation routes and fire zones and, and so forth. And not allowing a building, but that, that's a slow go right now. It appears up in Sacramento. So I am pleased to support this and appreciate the comments from my colleagues.
All right, Matt, I just have a, a couple of questions. You just made a reference to other cities that have done similar ordinances and have so far. Not had any legal challenges to them.
Yeah, the.
You, you don't need to describe which cities, but is there anything that we're doing that's new that could be challenged?
The piece that I haven't seen before is the ten foot fire separation requirement. Again, there, I think that there's a pretty good basis for it, but it is. It is new on this, in this realm.
Okay, um, I have, well, first of all, I'm gonna back up. I thought this was gonna, you know, when, when I. When we talked about putting this on the agenda and then I saw it pop up as. As an ordinance, I thought that this was going to be an information item about SB nine and ten. Were you given, I, were you given direction to come up with an ordinance?
I understood that my direction was to put an ordinance together for further discussion. I apologize if that wasn't the direction. That was what I had understood.
Where did that direction come from? I'm curious. I thought, I, I thought Kindon. I thought this was, that's why I didn't see the urgency in this and. And, and I'm just, I want to know the roots of where this became an ordinance.
I believe that Matt was, was given that direction, or at least I know I voiced that and so did Alicia Weintraub, as far as I remember. I'll let her speak for herself. It was not an update. We know what the update is.
Right, but I thought there might have been more of an update, so I, I really do want to know where the roots of this is because. Usually, okay, it takes a consensus of the council to direct up this amount of work.
I thought we got it, I thought we got a memorandum somewhere along the line and then at least two of us asked for it to come.
I think two of you did, but just can two people draft, have the city attorney draft an ordinance? I thought maybe.
I don't know how many, I'm just saying I know of two people. There may have been more who said, yes, I want this too. I'll, I'll let them speak for themselves.
My recollection is that it was at a future agenda items, a couple of meetings ago. And the request was one, two, then there were three. Yeah, I apologize if that wasn't the direction. That's what I.
This is, this is pretty serious. I really think we need to take. A step back after this meeting and evaluate how an information item could turn into. Hours and hours of our city attorney doing a new, new ordinance. I mean, that, that was. That was not made upfront to me. I mean, I was taken aback.
The end of his memorandum said, if you would like this, please let me know.
I remember that, James. No, I, and I know you have been wanting some, well, I didn't know what you wanted.
I don't know who, what I'm saying is I don't know who responded to that. I know I did.
So you may have single-handedly responded and said, create an ordinance? So watering this down or changing.
Question, as I remember, best I remember, the question at the end of the memorandum was. If you would like me to work further on this and prepare an ordinance, please let me know. And I responded in the affirmative. I can't tell you what other people did or didn't do. You have to ask. There's five of us here. Ask. I'm telling you what I did.
Okay, no, I, and I don't mean to, you know, this is. I don't mean to call you out or anything, but this was a complete. Surprise to me. And Councilmember Crowe, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe we were looking for who else supported this and I, I believe I did as well.
So that's two. Was there anyone else?
Me.
Okay, so that's three, okay. There we go, um. So so three of you responded separately to a request by the city attorney if you without. Public noticing that we were gonna that we would create an ordinance, I'm just. Protocol wise, I want to take a look at this after, you know, and and figure out if that's how we do it. This that city manager or the city attorney can send an email out saying, do you want me to write an ordinance and if there's three, they do it?
As I recall, it was not by email, the email was my memorandum with the information, the direction though came at future gender items when three. Three council members gave that direction in public for the future gender item to be prepared. That's again, my recollection, but obviously we need to sit with the information and confirm.
Okay, I and and I, maybe we could just do a quick. At after action review because the consensus is there obviously to do it, it's the process that. That um. This whole time I've been asked, I was asked, can we put the S B nine and ten? Information on, it was like an information item and I'm like, well, we're kind of full, but had I known. That this was a full blown ordinance that had. Been asked for, I would have uh, if no one made it clear to me until I wasn't involved in this at all until it was on the agenda, so. Um, yeah, uh, that's my uh take, I frankly, I. Think that A D U's are the solution to our neglect to provide um housing, I know it didn't, doesn't designate it as having to be. Um affordable, but I'm, you know, come on, a backyard unit is going to be more affordable than. A, you know, a single family or a a large new development, so I think you can make the assumption that it will it will be. So I'm I'm not, I I'm not going to support this, I don't support watering it down, I don't support. The the way this came to me, um, and so I see your hand up, Councilmember Pesachin, and those are my comments.
Yes, I thought of two additional, and Matt, this is this is not being voted on tonight to approve, is it?
No, tonight's is direction to move forward or not.
That's what I thought, I I you keep saying we're voting on it tonight, we're voting just to see whether the ordinance comes back. So when it comes back, what I'd like to see inserted in there, and this is again. The final vote will be subject to the council's discretion, I'd like to see an automatic repeal. Uh, provision such that if for any reason S B nine is repealed or tossed out by a court and. That this uh ordinance would automatically be terminated, that way it will not be interpreted as allowing for. Extra development, which it could be interpreted as doing if it's standing alone in there without S B nine.
That's actually, uh, that is in there already based on the other ordinances from the other from the cog cities.
Okay, and the same with S B ten.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on this? All right, then, um, we shall proceed um to continued business, item nine. Um, this is a discussion about hybrid or in person um meetings, is there any council member that wishes to take a break? Councilmember, no one, nobody, okay, all right, let's proceed, um, I believe Michael Russo is going to be presenting.
And Madam Mayor, if I can, well, Michael Russo is coming into the to the panelist uh group. Um, a couple of things that we're looking for direction on is. Uh, first and foremost, does the council want to return to in person and if so, when? Uh, that's, I think, the 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 question at hand, the other parts that um Michael will be addressing. Um, are the uh, the mechanics of that, what would that look like under different scenarios? Of being fully in person or hybrid, and and so I just want to remind the council that we're looking for direction on that, if if the council's interest is in not um. Coming back uh in person uh right away, um, I don't know if we need to. Uh, uh, go much into detail on the on the mechanics of it, so I just wanted to throw that out for the council.
All right, so let's, is Michael Russo here, is he going to be presenting options to us? Oh, there you are.
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, I have a very basic uh PowerPoint here.
And while you, um, when you tee this up, can you tell us what's required by the law when we have to go back or? What any, what any legal um guidance we have from both the county or the state?
There we go, can you, everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members, you know, for many years, the City of Calabasas really has been one of the top local government. Multimedia teams in the U S, especially among. Smaller cities, we routinely win national and regional awards for our video work. One part of that video work, of course, is televising city council meetings, we've been doing it since the nineteen nineties when the old city hall was located off Muro and Las Verges. Tonight, we're talking about hybrid meetings. Um, whether to do them, what they would actually look like is uh Kindon referred to sort of the mechanics, if you will, what happens under the hood. Now, we've done two of them already, of course, late last year, uh, so we have the the technical capability to do them, but it is more labor intensive than doing a regular meeting for just C T V channel three. And the web stream, so first, I want to make sure everybody is is kind of on the same page in how we define. A hybrid meeting, uh, a- as the name suggests, a hybrid meeting is when one or more meeting participants is not in the same location as the others. And you know, that can happen in many forms, we may have. Two council members at home and then three council members uh in chambers, maybe all five council members, city attorney, city manager, city clerk and staff, maybe they're all in chambers. Like normal, but maybe there's an outside consultant who needs to make a presentation from home, or maybe everybody's in chambers, but a member of the public. Wants to comment from home, these are all hybrid meetings and have different technology and staffing requirements than a traditional in person meeting. So let's take a look at what happens during four different meeting scenarios, now, number one. Is a traditional in person meeting in chambers, not a hybrid, this is how we operated for many years, of course. Uh, everybody's in chambers, no expectation of remote participation. From a staffing standpoint, communications uses two staff in our master control who. Manage the cameras and the audio and they manage the feed to C T V as well as our web stream, which is operated by Granicus. You know, fairly straightforward. Number two is technically a hybrid, since people are in multiple locations, Zoom with a C T V broadcast. That is the current setup, number two is what we're doing tonight, and it's what we've done now for for many months. Since we are remote, we use Zoom and then we push that Zoom through to C T V. And the web stream, also fairly straightforward, but it does require more staff, usually three communication staff. Um, one production staff, two I T staff, and then one extra clerk staff. Now, communication staff managed the C T V broadcast plus manage the Zoom meeting. As well as any support, and you know, we've all had to have support at times during during meetings, technical support. Uh, clerk staff keeps track of the public attendees in Zoom, again, this is the current setup. Now, number three is where everybody is in chambers, including staff and presenters, except maybe a member of the public who wants to speak. This is also fairly straightforward in that there would be a traditional C T V broadcast and web stream. Using the five cameras that are in chambers, we would feed that downstream into Zoom. If a member of the public is at home and wants to comment, in other words, wants to participate in the meeting, he or she would use the Zoom. Call in number to comment, same as they could do now for tonight's meeting. From a staffing standpoint, that would require three communication staff, uh, two production and one I T staff. Plus one staff from the city clerk's office. Number four is really, you can kind of call it a full blown hybrid meeting. Uh, it's a lot more complex in this scenario, let's say, one or two council members are at home on Zoom. And everybody else is in chambers, including the staff and public. For somebody watching on C T V or on Zoom, uh, it would look fairly normal at first, if the council member who is on Zoom. Wants to speak, then the viewer will see the Zoom video, maybe a chambers wide shot and Zoom audio. While this is happening, though, staff is working behind the scenes to make sure there are no video or audio feedback issues, there's a lot of work going on back there. And if a council member is home on Zoom and he or she is talking back and forth with somebody in chambers. That's kind of a logistical nightmare, it's really difficult to to keep track of all that and make sure there are no technical problems. Now, if a member of the public wants to speak and is on Zoom, the viewers would see a wide shot of the chambers and Zoom audio. Now, if if council members desire this, we could have a laptop or everybody on the dais would each have a laptop to display. The Zoom content, but the cameras on those laptops would be disabled. There are no individual video for count for a council member in Zoom, any close up shot. Will be managed by C T V staff in the control room, just like you would have at a normal council meeting. So this way, council members who are in chambers can focus on the meeting without having to do any extra tasks in Zoom. Now, this type of format requires four communication staff, you've got two production staff, two I T staff, and then one clerk staff. Now, you may recall, council suggested we look at how L A County handles its public comment at its Board of Supervisors meetings. But you may know they have a pretty pretty robust system, they've got phone moderators and they bring in each member of the public when it's their turn to speak. I I looked at it and what they use is A T and T conferencing in their meetings. So I went and checked with A T and T and they can do the same thing for us, of course, but it's not cheap. Um, using one of A T and T's, you know, professional moderators and communication line specialists would cost about three hundred dollars for each thirty minutes. Or a fraction thereof, um, so if we have one of our meetings that runs, say, three hours, that would cost eighteen hundred dollars for one meeting. Um, we have six meetings left in the current fiscal year, I believe, and um that eighteen hundred dollars per meeting, that would be ten thousand eight hundred dollars. In an average full year with, let's say, twenty meetings, that number would swell to thirty six thousand dollars, and this doesn't even include any city commission meetings. Just council meetings.
Is this conclude C T V?
I'm sorry?
C T V, C T V live, and this is and this is just the public comment aspect?
Yeah, well, this 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 is L A County.
I know, but if we did it in our city. Would it, would C T V be be would be broadcast live?
Yes.
And there would be the call in option running along the bottom, the number, et cetera.
Yes, I I see.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh, um, let's see, I wanted to update you also on the two neighboring cities who decided on their meetings going forward. Uh, that that were still undecided at last month's presentation by our city clerk. On Monday, Hidden Hills uh voted to return to in person meetings with their first meeting in June. But they will reevaluate in thirty days if conditions change, and earlier this month. Excuse me. City of Malibu had voted to go in person starting May ninth. No Zoom, no remote uh public engagement, but this week, I believe it was Monday. They reversed that, and so after the May ninth meeting, which was already noticed as in person, they will return to Zoom only until the COVID situation improves. So here, if the plan is to return everybody to chambers. A good solution may be to produce the meeting as you would a regular old meeting using the five cameras and chambers. Then run it through C T V and the web like normal as in the past, but also feed that same production downstream to Zoom. It's kind of the opposite of what we're doing tonight, where we have a Zoom that gets fed into C T V, this would be. The C T V broadcast meeting that gets fed into Zoom. If the public wants to engage in public comment remotely, no matter how they're watching the meeting. They would use the Zoom call in number, just like they could use for this meeting. And the budget impact would be zero above what we're already spending now because we have a Zoom account already. Um, due to staff limitations and budget and overtime considerations, it it might be more prudent to limit. Any hybrid meetings to council meetings only and continue using Zoom for commission meetings. Unless we plan to just return to chambers for all the meetings without any remote capability, so. Um, that's it for me, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'd also like to bring in Arvin Petro's, our media supervisor, as well as Tony Yen, our I T manager. Who might be able to answer more of the technical questions you might have.
Thank you, Michael, um, Mari, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, uh, yes, we have a public speaker, one woman, please, uh, the Sawaras, not sure whether it's Joan or John, we'll bring them in.
Is this our only speaker?
That's, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, this is Joanne Sawar, a longtime resident of Calabasas. I'm not sure which scenario you're going to choose, but I'm hoping that uh whatever one it is that you will please. Uh, continue letting the public access and speak at meetings remotely, it's been a a big boon. For um for us to be able to attend the meetings on a regular basis. Uh, living on the west side, traveling over to city hall, it's not exactly around the corner, heavy traffic. Um, up on the grade, uh, and then getting home after dark when you're a senior citizen, sometimes. Um, driving late at night is not exactly what you're looking forward to doing, uh, so. But whatever you guys decide to do with your seats and remote access, please don't cut off. On the public's participation, let us continue to be able to remotely. Um, weigh in on subjects that are important to us, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, if there are no.
Madam Mayor, we do have another speaker, apologies, Joe Chalko.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Joe Chalko, longtime resident, I just had a question for Michael. If you went to uh the version where you just have a shot of the. Council and you're just picking up audio, what happens to all the material that's being presented graphically like you did tonight? Uh, when you share your screen, it's so much easier to read it than it is in person. Uh, so I wouldn't want to lose that, and also you can adjust your own volume in those cases as well, so. When you have a older demographic, you have to start considering some of these things in terms of what people, how people are going to participate. And it's not just uh what all you young people on the council can see, it's important what the rest of us old people can see too. So thank you very much for the opportunity to comment, I hope you read my letter because I outlined at least. Eight different reasons to keep it the way it is, thanks very much, bye bye.
Thank you, are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, then we'll proceed, Councilmember Weintraub.
I just wanted to um clarify that I spoke to a colleague in Hidden Hills. And what they explained to me is that they are. Talking about possibly doing hybrid in June, but they're going to reevaluate depending on the numbers, that it's not a definite that they're going back in person in June. So, yeah, so I just wanted to make that point, um. I absolutely think that we need to keep a hybrid option, I think having the increase in civic participation has been so great. I remember two years ago when we were so afraid. Should we have a council meeting? And you know, when people were so concerned with other things, but people were so happy that we came back online right away and didn't stop doing city business, and I just feel so many more people. Have been able to participate and. Our meetings go long, you know, it's nice that we've heard this in letters too, that people can have the meeting on in the background and then jump in to participate. There's more cars off the road, people are feeling safer, so. I absolutely want to continue so that people have the option. Um, one way or another, I was on the public health call today, I'm not sure if anyone else was, and they were just talking about. The increase in COVID cases and that this is not the time to. If you can stay in this remote environment for a little bit longer. They were urging people to do that, um, for those who choose to, they're changing some new masking requirements. In the schools, I mean, things are, things continue to shift and. I think that we're getting our business done, I know that we don't all like it, you know, not being together in the chambers, but. I don't think anything has suffered as a result of us being in this environment and at the same time, we've been able to keep the community safe. being in this environment. And at the same time, we've been able to keep the community safe and there have been benefits to this. So when we decide to go forward, I would just like to have a hybrid option stay in place.
Okay. Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Thank you. And and when we talked about this last, bringing it forward this time a month ago, numbers were uh, as Alicia indicated, about 800 a day. Now they're double that. Uh, it might be because of spring bake holidays. We've got Mother's Day around the corner, so that may be part of the reason, along with increased travel and less masking uh everywhere. So there is the cautionary side of it to consider another, whether it's 30 days to to the next end of the month in May to bring this back and look at the numbers. I would be in favor of that. I am certainly anxious, like all of you, like everyone, to eventually get back to normal and get back to in person and get back to having people come to the council chambers uh as well. Uh, as far as the hybrid uh option, I think it is something that's here. I don't know if it's here to stay, but it's here for a while, and I think that makes sense. Michael, I don't recall if it was, I think it was option two initially, which is maybe staying it, staying as we have it now. And then maybe option three, which was to have us back with the, the Zoom or technology so people could call in or give their three minutes of public comment uh while we're all participating. Uh, that would be the process I would see going forward and eventually get to number one, which is all of us back in person.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would uh agree with my colleagues. I do want to see remote participation here to stay. Um, I think it has been amazing at allowing people to, to participate and comment uh and listen. Um, you know, we see the number of participants in Zoom. We don't get to see the number of ones on CTV, but knowing that they have that ability to jump on Zoom and comment if they want, I think it's essential. These meetings aren't a place for the five of us to talk to each other. They were a place for the community to hear what we're doing and to give us input as we go through that process. So uh, I would definitely support hybrid meetings. I'm also a big fan of, of getting the people back together. So um, once the numbers are, are right, once my colleagues are comfortable, I think it's important that we, we do hold city council meetings in person uh so that those that feel comfortable um can get that connection. And that connection, it's really hard to make a connection over Zoom, so we do need to get back to in-person meetings. Uh, but again, I will wait till my colleagues are, are, are comfortable with the numbers and uh, and the public is comfortable with, with showing up. As far as which option, option number four, Michael, uh, the full blown option is uh where I think we need to be. Again, this is important for us to be able to communicate with the public both in person and online. Um, I would say you, you mentioned there was no extra cost, but I really believe uh if we are doing a hybrid meeting and we have participation both in person and online, we might need an additional clerk. Um, so that's something to consider there because we would have two queues of people to manage. Um, I know Mari and uh Anulus are very talented here, uh, but uh I don't want to overburden them with this challenge either. And then the last thing I'd say is while you're looking into these options, as we've spoke before, uh, let's uh take a hard look at resolution. Uh, if we do the CTV broadcast into Zoom, I'm concerned about the lower resolution. I know people like the resolution that they can see on their screen today. Uh, so we might want to spend the extra money and go the other direction so that uh those participating on Zoom and those going back to look at our archive videos can see a much higher resolution than we can get with CTV. Uh, but technically, you know your stuff, so we'll let you work out the details, whichever way works best for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe.
All right, um, Michael, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Buzajin, and then I'll go and uh Councilmember Weintraub, oh, you can follow me.
Okay, um, I hope that for purposes of archiving, at least whatever we decide that you, the highest resolution will be used, we have the cameras in, in the chambers, so those should be utilized for the purposes of keeping the, the video footage. Um, in answer to the three questions, um, first of all, I, I don't mind meeting like this for a while, but I, I want there to be an end date and I want to constantly discuss that. This is not the way I envision a city council operating like this on Zoom. So I'd like to at least tentatively plan for, to get back together in person in August. Things can change. We can, we can obviously have hybrid, but I don't, I don't want to make it longer than that unless there's a real reason not to, not to get back. Secondly, um, I, I do support the hybrid. However, I want the focus to be on what's going on in chambers. People can participate via Zoom if they wish um, or call in. However, the main focus of that meeting should be in, in the town hall, in, in the council chambers. So that the council isn't being broadcast and the main focus is on Zoom, if that makes sense. I think that was in your option three or four. I don't remember which one it was.
That would be option three. That would be basically a CTV broadcast that's pushed through Zoom, the opposite of what we're doing tonight.
Correct. That's what I would support and not, and that was the one that didn't have extra cost or something?
Yeah, and in going back to what Councilmember uh Crowe said, what I mean extra cost, I was talking mostly about our Zoom account, not team staff. All of this would have increased staff participation needed.
And that's okay. I don't mind spending the extra money with staff, but I just don't, I want the focus to be on the council chambers. Now, the other thing that was mentioned is uh council versus commissions. Other people haven't addressed this, but I will say, um, I don't see commission meetings being able to run with this kind of technical assistance. It, it just would be too costly. And so I, you know, in, in the very old days, the commission meetings weren't broadcast. So if it stays on Zoom, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I mean, you know, it's got to be something that we decide as a policy decision, but I certainly wouldn't want to make all these technical issues and extra staff every single week, sometimes multiple times a week for commission meetings. That, that to me does not make sense. And I had asked for the approximate cost of that. I don't think, I didn't see anything in there. Michael, how, how much would that be per? If we were to go full blown hybrid with the commission? If, if we, how many, per commission meeting, how much would that be extra?
Uh, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't give you an exact cost in terms of staffing. You would have, I mean.
An extra clerk?
Right, you'd have extra clerk, you would have uh an extra IT person, you would likely have an extra production staff person as well.
Okay, well, I'm not really willing, yeah, I'm not really willing to spend all that money for commission meetings. So however they decide to run their meetings, it should be one way or the other, would be my impression when we go back. So those are my inputs. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give you some feedback. I think the opposite, James. I think whatever we do, um, and we've all I, I know the public wants to just continue having hybrids. I don't think we should change the format um, over costs. I think it's, public engagement should, should have a priority. Michael, can you put up the last slide which said solution?
Yes.
Um, I think that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, this is kind of a return to the traditional, when we're ready. Um, the yeah, there it is. Um, in the chambers, it's our traditional meeting. It's being taped by CTV and it's being broadcast through Zoom, so people can watch it on their phone, on their laptop. It's also being um broadcast by CTV. Then they're able to comment by a phone number?
Correct. It would be, it would be the Zoom number which people use, people could use tonight.
Got it, got it. I'm with you.
So that way, that way you don't have that added infrastructure.
Okay, and let me just walk through this a little bit more because right now we don't see anybody's face that's watching. There, so having them phone in, state their name, wouldn't be too big a leap because we don't see them anyway. And they, so we get the same people talking but over the phone. And then also we have the ability for CTV viewers to now participate or continue to participate um by calling that same number. Before, CTV viewers did not have a means of participating and providing public comment from home. Okay, so then, then the next one is no budget impact above current spending. To me, um, this seems the best, and it's, and it's, you can replicate it by the commissioners. The only problem I have with this, and my question is, this assumes that everybody's back in the chamber. Uh, all the council members, all the staff, all the presenters are all in the chamber, correct?
Correct.
However, if they were going to participate remotely, they could have their slideshow presented and they could call in. There still is a way for a staff person or a consultant or a council member to participate through this remote way?
Yes, because then you would be, you would sort of wind up going to an option four, which is more of the full blown hybrid. So.
Yes, which I, I endured with you, and it is so complex, my colleagues. It's, and it doesn't look good. You've got that, it just didn't look good. So I almost wonder with this, the simplicity of this, if we couldn't even start looking, planning something like that unless everyone feels differently, but getting ready for an August. I'm in no hurry either by any means. But I do still want to allow uh, an op, an opportunity for presenters who aren't comfortable on to participate. And they would be watching the CTV meeting. That's what I did when I would call in from Sacramento. I would sit on my computer and watch the meeting. And when I had something to say, I, I would say it. And that's, it worked just fine. And that's what we're talking about here too. Um, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I really, um, I really think this is a good look because it's a, a, a professional production. Um, it's not cobbled together. Um, and people have more I mean, the same access as they do now. They're not losing anything. And we're not losing anything. So that's, those are my comments. And if in fact, there's no spending um amounts, then um, we should do the same for for the others. That, those are my, I can't, I can't see my screen. Alicia, do you still have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Two quick points. Um, I just wanted to say, I think we need to do it for commission meetings as well. I think there's so many people who, you know, provide feedback for those meetings, and I think we could increase participation if we continue in this. And um, I think August was, is fine. I was going to recommend earlier, but I forgot that to reevaluate it, but we're not here. I mean, we're dark in July, but I think we should keep this as a quick item at our next um council meeting, just to see where we're at. Maybe it'll be earlier. I just, it's, I mean, I know the goal is to ultimately get back for the five of us, so we can continue the conversation.
Any other last comments? We really haven't given, we haven't narrowed down what it is we would like to see specifically. Are there any objections to what I just presented, which was Michael's solution or any concerns about that? Um, Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, Mayor, I think your suggestion is a great step. I mean, if we're going to start moving in that direction, that's a sensible place to start, so I, I would be in favor of starting there. I'm still anxious to, to get to a, a more robust participation, uh, but let's, let's start with that. And I like the August deadline as well, not deadline, but date.
Anyone else?
Uh, I just had a quick question, the state attorney. I know there's some state legislation involved here. Is any, any of what we said going to be ended by the current deadlines in the state legislature? I know, I know there's one. They've set an end date for remote meetings, but did they have any other provisions?
Uh, the end date's somewhat out. If you get off the top of your head what it is, but if there's some distance out there. No, I think the proposal afoot would be fine. And if the five council are all in chambers, then we're not relying on any of the remote meeting exemptions anyway. State law doesn't care where the public is. They care where the five chambers are. Not that public engagement isn't important, but for Brown Act purposes, what matters is where the council are. So we would be okay under that approach. And we'll continue to monitor it as it is constantly changing.
Anyone else? Any last comments on this item? Okay, Michael, Tony, um, Arvin, thank you all very much for that. Um, and it sounds like if there's no objection, oh, Kindon, did you want to say something?
Um, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. So is, is the direction at this point that we would wait until August? Um, do we want to plan for the second meeting in August since we have the break in July? Discuss it, the first meeting, just to see where we're at. I, I'm trying to clarify the direction on this.
Why can't we just prepare?
Now, let me.
A lot of time.
Yeah, let me, let me ask it this way. Is there, are there any objections to going to, to piloting in the first meeting of August? What Michael has proposed, which is a CTV view, we're present. The Zoom is still there with, and people call in and, um, is there any objections to starting off that way? It meets the criteria. So does that help, Kindon? It looks like.
That's, that's perfect.
Ready to move forward, and we can always adapt. We can always postpone. We can do whatever we want. Okay, great. All right, next on the agenda is informational reports and uh the check register. Are there any questions on the check register this month? All right, any task force reports? Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Thank you. Briefly before meeting today, I attended the United Chambers uh emergency disaster preparedness town hall. It was very good. A lot of relevant and good information to share, which I will share with Alicia and we, and the rest of the council as well. Um, I, tomorrow morning is our board meeting for Valley Economic Alliance, as well as California Cities Policy Committee, where we'll be discussing homelessness primarily and housing initiatives.
Councilmember Buzajin?
Yes, I continue to attend a number of uh California Contract Cities Association meetings and League of California City meetings where I serve on both boards. But I did want to highlight that tomorrow, Councilmember Crowe and I will be attending the local advocacy day put on by the California Contract Cities Association, highlighted by a candidate's forum with all the candidates running for county sheriff. It's going to get widespread media attention. I've been told it's going to be taped. And once it is taped, I will get a link to it and we can then uh share it with the community because it won't, it's not copyrighted or anything. So I will send it to the council and I'll send it to the C, uh, to CTV and we can publicize it.
Great. All right, um, I don't see any other hands. Moving on to, to the city managers' report?
Um, Mayor, council members, just a couple items. Uh, I didn't uh get the opportunity earlier, but I do want to thank um Marty and Anulus uh for what they do. Um, the, the community sees one component of it. The council sees another, and as, as staff, we see um probably tenfold of what they do and, and, and it's, it's magnificent. And so we, we appreciate them. Um, I did also want to announce uh, uh, congratulations to our staff. We did have our sixth cycle housing element approved this last week. Uh, that is a, a big step for us as it protects the city uh for some potentially unwanted development i- in the absence of a housing element. And it moves us forward in that direction. So uh, you know, again, I thank you to Tom Bartlett and Michael Klein and others uh for their hard work on this. And then one bit of good news, uh, we received a, a notification today that uh the city was awarded a grant of, in the amount of $35,000 uh for continued education and outreach on uh food waste. Um, and so uh, uh, thank you to Robert and his team, and especially to Marina, who uh went after this, this funding source and was able to bring in those funds, and we'll continue to look at ways to uh do the outreach that's necessary to help our residents and businesses meet that mandate from the state. So thank you, Mayor.
Great. Can you provide the public with some information um about the America in Bloom? Um, competition? I think they're coming to town, are they not?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not prepared for that. Can I do that at our next meeting?
Sure, but when are they coming to town?
I think it's the first weekend in June.
Oh, June. I thought it was May. Okay, sure, absolutely. Um, all right, moving on to future agenda or information items, Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, thank you. I uh want to uh get on to our agenda. Yeah, thank you. I want to get onto our agenda, a discussion of our water supply here in the city of Calabasas and the Los Virgin's Municipal Water District. And what steps we need to take to, to improve that, to create a redundant water supply so we don't find ourselves in this position over and over and over in the future. Councilmember Shapiro was with me at the Water District meeting online yesterday. There was a lot of discussion about this sort of stuff, but there needs to be more and there needs to be action items. And I'd like to see Calabasas take the lead on that. So if we could agendize that, I would appreciate it.
So there is an agenda item on that coming up, and it's also part, isn't it one of our projects, our priority projects as well? Kendon, water conservation and replenishment?
So Mayor, you are correct. So at the May tenth meeting, we're looking at, we want to present to council some steps the city is taking to consider or to look at, to further its water use reduction efforts. I think what Councilmember Crowe is saying is the bigger picture of why we are in the situation we're in and what needs to be done more at a state level and then working with our district to make some corrections. Being a lead agency in that regards, so we are prepared in the future. Did I accurately represent that?
Yes, and without getting, you know, turning this into a meeting, but the agenda needs to include such things as a pumping station of the Sepulveda Pass to get water from the Colorado River up to our district. It needs to include things such as lobbying for the work at the Delta that improves the water quality and quantity at the Cal State Water Project. There are so many things that we are so dependent on outside areas for our water. And it's not the stuff within Calabasas, but the stuff outside of Calabasas I really believe we need to lobby for.
Anything else? That is quite a list. I think that working with the city manager and the water district, we can come up with a good program. Councilmember Weintraub.
I had the same request for a future agenda item with not as much detail, but the same topic. But my concern is that if this is truly going to happen on June first, our residents, nobody's prepared. So no one's prepared for it to.
Well, you know what? I have to say how frustrated I am because I have been talking about it. The water district's been issuing mailings. They've been warning high-water users. And nobody is, is paying attention or making a reduction. It's really disheartening.
Right, but I think it went to fifty percent reduction. I'm copied on emails. I mean, Dave Peterson has been so amazing. People inquire about their water budget. He's looking it up personally and trying to help people through this. So we do have concerned residents, but the rest of the people have no idea what's going to happen on June first. And people in Calabasas pride themselves on their green lawns. I mean, but we don't have a meeting for two weeks, and then that's two weeks after that. So we really have to figure out how to communicate and what we're going to do quickly.
So Kendon, maybe since this is an emergency, we can use our telephone system and let the public know that they must reduce water to one day a week and fifty percent of their outdoor budget. Everyone will get the same message at the same time. I hope it's effective.
And we can coordinate with Dave Peterson to make sure, because you know, there are some exemptions, you know, if you have a drip irrigation and you can still water your tree roots by hand. But we need to, this is really crucial and it's happening so soon and we are just not prepared.
It's been happening for a long time. Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
Thank you. And I was going to add to that item as well, since we can make it a bigger item, but ways that we can work with the water district in our city to incentivize, as was a great program previously when the federal government and state all had incentives for individuals to go ahead and put in drought tolerant plants and rocks and so forth in their front yards at least, but maybe now even more than that. So that's one. The second, especially in light of what you discussed, Madam Mayor, tonight, it's been on our future agenda for quite a while. It's one of the last items listed now. But protocols on the city emails, committees pertaining to mayors in election cycle items and in light of what happened tonight with SB nine and ten, I think that's something we need to put as a very high priority, not push off till we're after a break.
Councilmember James and I are working on that in July at the latest, maybe sooner. But we are taking, in fact, you know what, Kendon, can we reissue to all council members our protocol and ask for your comments on them? You could redline them. You could handwrite any notes, any additions, anything you'd want to see in it. And James, when would we want that by?
Actually, I don't think we can do that because that would be having kind of a serial meeting outside the context of a meeting. I thought of that too, but it can't go to us.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't send all the, the five edits and five council members should go to staff, not directly back to the two council.
There you go.
Members and mindful of the timing on getting that done. One thing to consider is if the council was going to change things regarding anything related to persons who may be on council and running for the election, it might make sense to do that before the candidate period opens in late July. So maybe it'd be, if possible, put this on one of the June agendas.
July eighteenth, that's when nomination period opens.
Thank you, July eighteenth. So maybe so that the playing field is level on that front. But yeah, I would suggest the edit should go through staff. That way we avoid any chronic issues.
Okay, why don't we work it out with Kendon and we'll get it distributed, get a date. Staff will manage all of the the suggestions and you guys can be ready for discussion then. I mean, will James and I see the recommendations? Because it would be helpful to see them. No, we won't.
We can sort out how to, how to structure that without getting the information you need, but also not violating the Brown Act and trying to write protocols to comply with Brown Act. We'll sort that out.
All right, and we'll get on that. Thank you, Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
Thank you. And last item, and it can be put whenever you'd like. I sent it to everyone. I'd like to see a future agendas discussion about AB fourteen forty-five to see if we want to support that as a city. Especially since we spoke about evacuation and fire safety districts, that's what that bill is going forward in Sacramento.
Councilmember Buzajin.
Yes, a couple of things. I don't know if it goes to commission or whatever, but this is, it's always of concern regarding candidate forums and such. And I did mention this to Kendon. Some of the groups, or at least one of the groups in the past that has been moderating our council candidate forums, has taken positions on municipal issues. It was in our packet, in fact, the legal women voters in favor of SB nine and ten, for example. It would be entirely inappropriate for them to, we have to craft some rule regarding who gets to moderate debates and not taking partisan positions. By partisan, I mean for or against the bill or whatever, not taking positions like that. It has to truly be a civic group. And I'd like the CTC to revisit those criteria and make sure they're ironclad so we don't fight over this during the cycle. The other thing on, I would reiterate my support for the water measures that we're going to be discussing to have them come back soon. One thing I would like the city attorney to be prepared for are questions regarding potential ordinances with respect to vegetation. Can a city regulate and say grandfathering in what's there now? In the future, no, you can't, you know, put in non-native vegetation or grass or whatever, things that will suck up water. So I don't know the answer to that, but, and I'm not, I don't want to discuss it openly here. I just want the city attorney to be prepared to know the parameters of what we can and can't regulate with regard to landscaping. With the notation that we have a lot of non-native vegetation in the city that really eats up a lot of water.
What do you?
Ornamental too. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, with that, we will adjourn to close, we won't adjourn, we'll go back to closed session. Let's take a five-minute break and remember to use the other link to go to closed session. Thank you all.
Thank you.